Good afternoon, it's 3:00 PM and we are in room 229. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. I will cover the higher education committee's 3:00 PM agenda. We will like the event that we have in a book. And to this hearing, due to technical difficulties, the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Tuesday, February 8th at 3:00 PM in this room 229. And a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. For testifiers participating remotely, your audio will be muted and video disabled until shortly before it's your turn to testify. Testifiers will be limited to two minutes each, and at the end of the two minutes, the audio will be automatically muted. Sergeant of Arms, you think we can get a recording of this? So we're going to have to sit every time. I'll be reading a list of individuals who submitted written testimony for each measure. We apologize if the closed caption doesn't transcribe your name correctly. And if you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the legislature's website. You will find a link on the status page for this measure. If there are temporary technical glitches during your turn to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. We appreciate your understanding. Remind you that the committee has your written testimony, and this is a recording. Thank you. Just want to add some humor to what we're about. I want to go ahead and introduce my committee members. To my right is the vice chair of the committee, Senator Michelle Caddani. To my left, we have Senator Kurt Lovella. And on YouTube, we have Senator Kill- Kill. Kill Gill Argoron. Keith Argoron. And I believe Senator Akai will be joining us shortly. So with that, we will go right ahead and start off with our first agenda item, which is Senate Bill 2304, remaining to the Research Corporation of the University of Hawaii. This bill clarifies the purpose of the Research Corporation of the University of Hawaii to promote educational, scientific, and literary pursuits through research, training of research personnel, dissemination of knowledge by publication of research findings. And its undertaking shall be limited to acts that are reasonably necessary to carry out this purpose. By Vasilis Sermos, Vice President of the University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair Kim, my vice chair, Caddani, and senators. We stand on our testimony opposing.
Okay, our next testifier is Lenny Govea, Executive Director for RCUH.
Good afternoon, Chair Kim, Vice Chair Caddani, and other members of the committee. My name is Lenny Govea, Executive Director of the Research Corporation of the University of Hawaii. Thank you for allowing me to submit my written testimony on the measure. And I stand by my written statement and will be available for questions if anyone has any. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy Perro, Executive Director for Hawaii Government Employees Association.
Not present, Chair.
Not present. He sent in testimony in support. And members, I'm not going to read it off, but we have 26 written testimonies by individuals opposing, all opposing this measure. And that is all the testifiers or testimonies that we have received. And so if there's any questions, members? If not, I have quite a number of questions. First of all, let me start with the Vice President of Vasilis. So I understand, and it was also noted in the testimony for Mr. Govea, RCUH, regarding the task force that was asked for in Senate Resolution 148 SD1. And you did give us a copy of that. I believe I did send it out to the members. And while that resolution or that study doesn't really pertain to what we're talking about today, there is a portion in there which I want to ask you. Vasilis is that, on page 12, "Human resources have created a potential of non-compliance with federal regulations because UH is unable to know in real time whether UH employees concurrently employed on UH funds via RCUH." Can you comment on that?
Yes, Chair. So one of the issues we addressed in that task force is dual employment of UH employees that can also be employed by RCUHs. The federal government does not allow UH employees to be hired by RCUHs using federal funds on a different pay scale or on a different pay rate. That has been determined by the federal government. So in order to clarify that internally within the university, we have proposed and we have put together an executive policy which will prohibit UH employees hired by RCUHs, not only on federal funds, but also any other type of state funds, including RTRF and tuition. Because though the funds are sent to RCUHs in a form of a service order, the funds themselves remain UH funds. So the pay master is the same, and you cannot have the same employee paid by the same pay master on two different rates.
So if that's the case, how come it's being done?
You mean currently?
Yes.
I think currently that does not happen on federal funds. There are incidents that this happens on UH funds. For example, we can have one employee that makes $100 on their UH salary. The rate is $100. However, they can make $150 on an RCUH payroll. And that payroll can be through a service order of RTRF or tuition and special funds.
Actually, in real life, it's more than that, right? I think it's $120? But they're getting paid double that with RCUH or more?
I don't have specifics in front of me, and I'm not familiar exactly with the rates that certain individuals paid. They may actually be paid the same rate. So I don't think that everybody that has a dual employment between UH and RCUH, they make double on the RCUH side. They maybe, but maybe not.
In the case of the XMBA program, though, I believe those are the numbers that was given to the committee, and it showed that they were making probably double.
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I think the rate of pay is higher than the rate of pay of their UH salary, correct?
Okay, and how many employees are we talking about?
I do not have that information. I don't know if Lenny has that information, but I don't have that information in front of me. I know they provided that information to you in the past, but I don't have that readily available in front of me.
Okay. Are you aware, Vasilis, about the UH internal auditor who has been asking questions regarding the XMBA program that is being run out of RCUH? Whether or not they received answers and questions and resolved this issue internally?
I know that it is on the schedule of the Internal Audit Committee. And if I'm not mistaken, it was discussed, I want to say, six, seven months ago when Regent Nakoba had questions during that meeting. I don't remember the exact questions that Regent Nakoba had raised at that meeting.
So these questions have been raised by the Board of Regents, and nothing has been resolved, as far as you know?
I'm not aware of whether this audit has been completed or not yet. Sorry, I do not have that information.
Okay. Mr. Govea, so these are concerns that has been brought up. Concerns from the auditor in 2015 raises concerns about RCUH exemptions, procurement laws are meant to ensure fair competitive access to government contracts, civil service laws support a merit-based system of public employment. We found that RCUH allows state agencies to circumvent contract requirements, secure services without proof of government's approvals, and forego required project evaluations. We found that the corporation lacks clear policies and procedures. We further found that written policies could improve RCUH oversight of UH internal and UH revolving fund account projects. And so these are all concerns that have been raised, and yet you folks continue to run or accept some of these projects and service orders?
So I don't have what you're referring to in front of me or any response to the audit findings, but my understanding was that we did prepare responses to that, and we had cleaned those things up. Now, specifically with regard to whether or not that has happened since those reports have come out, I do not know. And that is what we identified as part of our recommendations in the task group, as some of the things that we need to go through in addition to our strategic planning report that we have come up with. So that's a part that I'm referring to in my opposition memo, that, you know, we need to get into the weeds on those specific issues, and we have not been able to do that yet. We are working with both Vasilis and the university on those issues, and we have meetings scheduled to address them and move forward.
But the problem, Mr. Govea, is that RCUH has become such a big entity, and it's continued to grow. And more and more, they are taking on more and more activities that was never intended in the beginning. And if you look at the original statute, that it was not to handle research grants and to facilitate these grants. And we were given, RCUH was given exemptions to the procurement code and other exemptions to facilitate being able to utilize this funding for research and to hire and to be able to not be backed down. And yet, through the years, it's grown and grown, and you folks have done West Oahu construction. You yourself said you folks have done about 100 construction projects. You have this XMBA program that I have a lot of questions on. You have the, what is that? The out-of-state, not out-of-state, but the firm, firm. What is that program? Outreach program, study abroad.
Study abroad program, sorry.
Study abroad program that's being run through RCUH, when it should have been run through outreach college? So how is it that you folks can accept all of these programs?
Hi, Chair. Sorry to interrupt. We're having technical difficulties. If you could call a recess.
I'm sorry?
Could you call a recess? Well, we're having technical difficulties.
Okay, recess. We want to call this committee back to order. Mr. Govea, I believe we're in the middle of a question.
Right. So hopefully I remembered where we left off, and this answer will be applicable to your question. But as you know, Senator, I agreed last year, and I believe Vasilis did as well, that we need to evaluate UH and RCUH policies, procedures, and practices, and that our actions need to be aligned with our scope to make sure that we were addressing the concerns that you had indicated. Even prior to you appointing or requesting the task force to be appointed under Vasilis, Vasilis and I had already been meeting with a group to address some of these issues and a plan for. Then we kind of put that on hold because the task force came about, and we did that. And you asked to have the report done by the beginning of this legislative session, which we did. And we also were doing the new five-year plan for, strategic plan for RCUH. All of this was happening at the same time in addition to all the requests that you folks were giving to us. And I think there were at least probably more than 10 requests for information, and we provided thousands of pages of documents to you. So not only is that helpful for you, but that was helpful for us to get prepared for doing the evaluation we need moving forward. So at this point, all I'm saying is that the proposed changes in the bill is currently written, that you have provided right now. It doesn't address the concerns that you have or are concerned, which is not all the same. And it certainly won't be an improvement over the current RCUH statute. So we just respectfully would like you to give us the time to do what we need to do to address all of those issues. And what I was expecting, and maybe wrongfully so, was for you to provide a response to our task force report and say, okay, I like this or I don't like this. This is what you need to add or remove because I don't care about this, et cetera. That's kind of what I was expecting. But, you know, that's basically my response because, you know, a lot of these issues that you're identifying, it takes a lot of time to go in and look these things up. You know, Vasilis and I aren't sitting down doing these things on a daily basis. So we have to go in and figure this out. And it's not something that, like I said, we don't do that on a daily basis. So we do have to get to the bottom of it and figure it out and do the right thing.
Okay, so I appreciate you saying that you want me to go through the report, but that's not my role. It's your folks' role to look at what your scope is and to make sure that you are in fact abiding by the intent of your mission and the scope. And when you start to add in things, and I'm going to ask you this, is to how can you accept the XMBA program? How can you run a degree program out of RCUH? When that is the role of the University of Hawaii? Are you going to run the off-school programs out of your department? I mean, how is that possible? And the fact that you accept these things, then you have all of these issues and questions. So this measure is meant to streamline your background to focus on your mission of research and training and federal grants and so forth. I mean, there's others. You take on the state programs. You hire people that, I know the unions are concerned. It's so planting the civil service program. You know, they are either studying abroad, you're doing construction projects. I mean, this was all not intended for RCUH. And yes, you might be able to point to a statement or a sentence in the statute that you believe gives you the right to do that. But just because you think that it's allowed or you can stretch it, that it makes it okay? And because of that, we feel that we need to go ahead and streamline it back down to what the intent was. And if you're not going to do it yourself, and you're not going to police yourself, then you force us to have to put out these kinds of measures because we've been talking about this for quite some time now.
Well, since I've taken on, I can assure you that I haven't added on anything. We've cut back, if anything. And even the, you know, you're talking about RCUH growing. It's actually gone the other direction under my direction. And we have the least number of people supporting RCUH right now. And we are making changes as necessary and appropriate, and we are moving in the right direction. I did tell you I can't do this overnight, and you told me you didn't expect me to do it overnight, and I appreciate that. We're working hard to get this done, but we're talking about some serious proposed changes. So we can't just chop these issues off. We need to fully evaluate it. The construction one is a perfect example. We do not do construction management, but we do construction procurement. And I know we've gone over that in pretty significant depth in the past, but it still seems to be, it appears that what you're saying is we should have nothing to do with any construction, period. And if that is the case, the University of Hawaii is going to have to evaluate this and address this because if we put an end to that tomorrow, who's going to pick up the task of all of this? And a whole lot of research is going to run into a stone wall. And a lot of this extramarial funding that we have is going to be, you know, basically breach of contract, the way I look at it from the legal standpoint. So we have to address this wisely and sit down with President Lasner and Dr. Sermos and choose wisely moving forward so we don't hurt our state. It's not RCUH, it's not UH, it's our state. We don't want to hurt our state by doing, you know, something hasty. And that's all I'm asking for, is the time to evaluate this and do the right thing.
All measures that would be going forward. If this measure passes, it's not that it would end tomorrow or it would end on June 30th. Obviously, if there are projects and programs in the Pike, those measures would continue to get fulfilled, but any projects would not be taken on. I'm not sure what construction project that the university can't do themselves. They have their own procurement. You use their procurement people, right?
Absolutely. They do a lot of construction. They do the construction management. It's, like I said, construction procurement. And we have policies and procedures of UH that we follow to ensure that we don't take on what we shouldn't be doing.
You're literally a pass to use your procurement exemption. Because you use the same people at UH that would normally be done anyway. Take, for example, the clinical trials. Through the procurement, yes, Mr. Vasilis?
Actually, I do understand the issues you have about construction for RCUHs, but most of our research programs use RCUHs and especially their procurement services on construction, not on these large programs like the Cancer Center or West Oahu or any other programs, large construction programs. 90% or 95% of construction that we do with RCUHs are for minor construction, minor renovations, for the support of our extramarial research or actually in support of training. So that will have some devastating effects, and we inadvertently are going to hurt actually the 90%, 95% of the minor construction renovations that we do in a very efficient and effective manner through RCUHs.
So we had an amendment in there that said minor and with the fine minor constructions that's related to those research grants and projects that would take care of that, right?
In my mind, 95% of those are not over, let's say, $5 million. The ones that I understand that you have some angst are major, like you disagree with the early clinical trials, construction, or with West Oahu. These are major, major construction programs. These are not the bread and butter of our extramarial funding and support of our extramarial funding type of renovations and CIP.
And I think that's what the intent was of the statute as we've moved forward over the years. But because it's taken out of proportion and used, utilized to the convenience of the university to do construction projects and avoid using, having exemptions and filing procurement. And that seems to be the problem. And again, you know, you talk about unintended consequences, and when you start those practices, this is what happens. The MBA program, again, how are you able to run that through RCUH?
You know, I do not know the whole history of that, but I believe that it is, and I don't want to speak for UH. I really believe that that's something that UH should opine on, but...
But you're the director of RCUH. You have a board. How can you folks accept something like this when it's not within your mission?
Well, it has been accepted in the past. So right now, as the new executive director, we're evaluating that and determining how we're going to move forward with the guidance of UH, since it impacts them. You know, we don't choose what comes to us from the University of Hawaii that came through and it was done. And we're evaluating that currently with Vasilis.
I have to interrupt you in that. You say you don't choose. You mean, anything and everything that UH asks you to do, you do because you don't choose?
No, I didn't say that. I said that we don't choose. So in other words, I don't sit down and tell UHA, I want this, 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 and give me this. So that's not how it works, so...
But if they tell you, we want this, 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 and this, you accept it all?
In the years past, I think they accepted more than, more often than not, unless there was reason not to. And that's what we need to evaluate right now and determine if the practices of the past were correct or not. And...
I asked for a list of those projects that were rejected, and they said you folks don't keep track of it. So I would assume there's none because nobody could tell me any project that was rejected. So the concern is that, who's running RCUH? Is it RCUH or is it the university? Because that was not the intent. And you folks have to live by certain requirements. And if I was UH, I'd ask you guys to do everything, just like they're doing. And if I was UH, I'd ask you guys to do everything, just like they're doing. But it's up to you and your board to say, hey, you know, that's not within our mission, sorry. And we've reevaluated the stuff, and although it's been done in the past, it shouldn't be done now. So have the, have the president told you that this program will be moving?
I was told that they're looking into it and they're gonna decide how they're gonna process it. So I'll let Vasilis answer what they're doing on their side.
I I I think there are internal conversations of uh moving the program. I believe the president, the provost, and the dean of the business school are working uh with UPa and also mostly with the business school to see how they can move that program out of RCUHs.
Okay, because the president did say at the last budget, when I'm briefing, that was happened a couple of weeks ago. He said, when asked that that, and I will quote, "That practice will end," unquote. Then he also, when I asked him when, and he said targeted for next fall. And so I would think that that would be shared with you, Mr. Govea, at least um that you'd be informed if, in fact, this is really happening. Because I know we were told stuff and then nobody else knows about it.
I'm sorry, I I didn't catch that last statement you made.
I said that I'm surprised that you have not been told that this is the plan. And I only can only tell you what was shared with us in public cuz we have it on tape and reviewed it before this hearing to make sure I said it correctly. That that is what the president said, this practice will end. Um.
I I was told that it was going to end and um, but I wasn't told that I had to end it today or, you know, anytime, no time.
He said as well, end by um next fall.
Okay, so yeah.
I think the president is working really hard to actually make that a reality. Uh, it is difficult. Uh, but I wanna assure you, Chair, that uh uh the president is working that issue very hard. As unpleasant as it is, he's working it really hard. Uh, I don't know whether it's gonna be fall. Uh, but uh, but but he has some serious conversations, uh I think, as we speak.
Okay, so, Mr. Govea, I'm looking at what you sent me regarding the uh MBA revolving account, which I understand based on your own policies that it's not, it's not supposed to carry over high balances. It's not supposed to be profitable, and yet the MBA accounts are millions of dollars uh year after year, whether so far the years you showed me. And based on some of these expenses, we're looking at not only salaries but fringe benefits. I didn't realize that these professors are, is that the professors that are getting fringe benefits in addition to what they're getting at UH?
I think we'll have to look at the individual um cases. I I don't know that information that you requested just yesterday. We scrambled to put it together, and I did respond to you with the caveat that uh we're providing what we have in our records. And I don't know the specific details of each file, but we provided what we could to you in good faith um to be as transparent as we could. But you know, UH, I'm sure, has their own records on these things and probably have a much more detailed um information in there as far as who it belongs to and and how the program is set up. And that's not something I believe that we have on our side.
Okay, let me come back to that. I understand Senator Alguera has a a question. Senator?
Yeah, sorry, I had to get unmuted. You know, I had a question about uh testimony um from a number of people, I guess, who have contracts being uh managed through RCUH and specifically people that are doing um natural resource and environmental management. What exactly in the proposed amendments would prevent or would would end being able to do those types of research projects?
Uh, I can answer that, uh, Senator. I don't think that uh it would prevent the university from performing that work. What it will do, it will prevent the university from performing that work in an efficient and effective manner. Uh, RCUH, because of its procurement exemption and some of the HR exemptions that uh they actually enjoy, make the execution of these projects extremely effective and efficient in a timely manner. So we would like, you know, uh, if uh the proposed measure passes, we're gonna return to a situation before two thousand uh uh which uh we didn't, we didn't have our extramural fund service order to RCUH. So I think it's a step backward, if you were to ask me. So it is imperative imperative, and I wanna make that sure again and again and again. Our extramural funds will really take a hit if they're not service ordered to RCUHs. And that's what Section Two of this bill will do.
So it has more to do with the procurement exemption that you currently enjoy, then?
Correct, Senator.
Okay, thank you.
So just to follow up on that, Vasilis. So your extramural funding, are there, is that federal research funds?
Yeah, our extramural funding is everything, whether it's federal, state, philanthropic or from private companies that come to the university to execute specific tasks, whether those tasks are for research or training.
Okay, so these environmental, environmental projects that we're hearing from people uh would be covered under research and training?
Correct.
So we're, we're not, extramural funds. So we're not saying you cannot do that?
Uh, you actually do say that in your Section Two of this bill.
Okay, so if we were to replace that Section uh Two of that bill, let's see, with our Senate Bill three, two, six, seven, would that take care of the problem?
That would take care of that problem. It has another problem, but it would take care of that problem.
What's the other problem?
Uh, there is a a language there that calls for consultation on hiring all positions with uh with our collective bargaining unit. That would be HGA. Uh, we have a process right now that is reviewed of every position from uh the Office of Human Resources here at UH and my office. And that uh in that process is was put together, I want, I wanna say, ten, twelve years ago. Uh, and it is supposed to uh streamline which positions should remain at UHs and which positions should go to RCUHs, even for extramural funds. Uh, the process in my mind works uh well. My uh in others' mind, it does not. I am more than willing to have a conversation with HGA on that. But I would prefer to have that conversation with HGA without that being in the statute.
Okay, so in the bill, we do say to consult with the unions on that, and you're opposing that?
Uh, I'm I'm not opposing consulting with the unions, but how you consult uh is not clear to me. So that's, that's the only thing in my mind. I I don't have any issues consulting with the, with our unions.
Okay, so again, you know, it is not the intent for for this committee of the legislature to derail many of these projects and these research and and training. We are looking at how do we take care of things like study abroad, uh ex MBA programs, degree programs, these revolving accounts that uh it seems to be violating your own policies. Um, you know, many of these construction, large construction projects um and to to be able to to minimize some of that. And again, um, so certainly I have uh ready with some amendments that hopefully will address some of the concerns that was raised today. And as it goes through the process, I'm sure we can make sure that that is um taken care of, so.
Thank you, Chair.
Senator Alguera, did you have any more questions you wanted to follow up on? No, okay, I will assume that is no. Um, so going back to the study abroad, so shouldn't that be run out of the outreach college?
I am not an expert on the study abroad, uh Chair. I I don't, I I I.
Okay, let me ask you this, what is the purpose of outreach, outreach college?
Uh, the purpose of the outreach college is to provide professional degree certificates and courses uh to the community, including uh students and returning students. So they provide a lot of those certificates out there.
So the the um study abroad then would fit in that program, or should be in that program, correct? Based on what you just said.
Uh, it it is a university program. It should be with the university. I don't know exactly where, but it should be within the university, yes.
Just as the ex MBA program, right? Now.
It is, yeah. It it, and and we don't disagree with you on that, uh, Senator. It is a degree program, it should be within the university.
Okay, my understanding is there's been an ethic violations regarding uh the person that was running the study abroad, how they created their, how uh charge account, charge or bank account was was created, and they were spending money for parties and stuff out of this account, and they were fined five thousand dollars by the Ethics Commission. Are you familiar with that?
I have heard of that, yes.
Okay, do you know if the university have done an internal uh investigation? Because I got a um constituent email saying he requested for that investigation, and UH is not releasing it to him, and asked that I would ask for it.
I have no idea about the, an investigation or the findings of investigation. I had just heard uh what you repeated about the ethics violation, but I have no other details on that.
Mr. Govea, are you familiar with that?
Uh, same here, I've heard of it, but I have no details on it either.
Okay, again, you know, this program being run out of RCUH, right, when it should not be. Uh, let's talk about the revolving a- a- accounts. And as I was alluding to earlier, what you sent to me, salaries, fringe benefits, domestic travel, consultant fee services, employee foreign travel, rental stipends, um parking, I'm not sure about parking, cuz I thought this is the MBA, ex MBA program is done online, parking to the two or fourteen thousand dollars. Um, let's see, residence weekend, membership dues, uh, marketing protocol, classroom refreshments, classroom refreshments came up to about eight thousand dollars, I'm not sure what that is, if it's being run in the ex MBA program being run online. Um, and for twenty twenty-one, that amount came up to two point one million dollars expenditures. Um, the revolving accounts, the balances that you have there, and you have hundreds, did you count how many, how many revolving accounts? Mr. Govea, did you count how many revolving accounts, twenty-six million dollars worth?
Yes, um, I don't have the total number in front of me this time, but we did have that in a prior hearing that we talked to you with or about. Um, I I don't recall the the number, but we do have the information. And like I said, we are prepared to evaluate that with the University of Hawaii to determine, you know, how they want us to proceed.
Okay, because the policies that you gave us regarding these accounts, well, none of them do not qualify. Right? They carry balances, they have a profit, they're not supposed to be in a revolving account. And so how do they continue to exist? You've got your word, go ahead.
I I agree that those, we need to look into that and figure out what, why, and how it happened, and whether or not it's appropriate to continue or not. And if not appropriate, how are they gonna um address it moving forward? But again, you know, we need um UH's input in there. We can't just um make those decisions without um having a good plan forward.
Okay, but if it violates your policy, then what's the process?
Then we're gonna stop it and say that we can't do it any longer and take the uh account and move on with it. Um, but again, that evaluation and that um discussion has not happened yet.
Can you have a timeline as to when you will do that?
No, I'm not sure if we identified that in our task force or the strategic plan, but I do have uh meetings tomorrow um that we are addressing that issue, um, the handling of the account. So I would be sure to um bring that up.
So, Senator, uh, we're planning to look at those accounts, both uh from a compliance uh standpoint and also from a purpose point, whether they truly serve the purpose of RCUH and the research and training enterprise of the university. So uh we're gonna work those uh those details. We have also strengthened our executive policy, which will soon be revised uh within a month or two. So which will address some of those concerns you have. Uh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So they give it, can you give us a timeline?
Oh, Senator Kidani, uh, I I will say that we will conduct a review, a thorough review. Uh, I will need three to six, uh, three to six months from now uh because we have to go in and uh and look at those accounts. We we do not manage those accounts uh from my office or Lenny's office. They're managed uh down at the field. So we need to go each account individually and interview the people on the accounts and the fiscal officer and understand why they have a balance or they are in deficit and whether the accounts truly serve the purpose that they they were open for. So uh I think we're gonna conduct a a review within the next three to six months. If, is that a good answer for you, Senator?
Well, we won't be in session, but uh.
Uh, I don't wanna give an answer and then uh do not be able to honor my commitment to you uh off the cuff. Can I answer that within a day or two, so I can have a much more educated timeline?
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Uh, the concern I have is that those accounts are supposed to have approval. Who approves those accounts to begin with?
Those revolving accounts are approved by the university. Every campus, uh, every chancellor approves uh those accounts or delegation of the chancellor to a vice chancellor.
So there's something wrong with that process, right? If we have these accounts that are, does not meet those requirements? And how often are they reviewed?
They're supposed to be reviewed once a year annually. I think it's annual. Uh, they're supposed to be reviewed for both compliance and financial stability.
Okay, so obviously, they're not been because, right?
Uh, that, again, Senator, that's exactly, I got a, we have to go down to the field and look at each account.
Right, but I I I wanna get to the core of the problem, and you know, for this to have gone on for years is is problematic. So, Mr. Govea, how often do you folks review these accounts that you folks take on that meets your requirements?
I I hope I'm not misspeaking, but I believe it's the same uh yearly, and we get the approvals from UH. Um, my understanding is just quite a bit of approvals for each account, and then it comes through our office and at least one or two, I I'm, I believe, one or two people um review it and approve it um prior to um it being allowed to continue. But you know, we don't.
This is your last review. When was your last review?
I'm sorry?
When was the last review? December of the?
I, I think it's, I think it's on a, I don't.
It is on a fiscal year, so if I'm not mistaken, it is, uh, June or July of every year that these accounts.
Can you just submit the, uh, June or July, whenever the last, uh, review of all the accounts were done? And if you can submit that to us, that would be helpful.
You know, we, we'll, we'll do that again, but I believe we probably provided that already, not, not in a specific, um, and we'll do this again. So it's much more convenient for you, but I'm pretty sure we already provided it to you.
You provided the funds, but you didn't provide the review, right?
Yeah, so I, I'll check.
Yeah, I wanna see.
But if not, we did, we will definitely provide it again. So we'll look at it, and I'll have an answer for you that's more concrete.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, thank you. Thank you for saying this. Thank you, Mr. Gavre.
Thank you.
To item two, uh, Senate Bill two, three two seven seven relating to the President and University of Hawaii. For him, it's the President of the University of Hawaii from serving concurrently as Campus Chancellor. First to fire is President David Lasner.
Thank you, Chair Kim. Um, in the interest of time, I'll just stand on my written testimony in opposition, uh, which reviews why we got to where we are and, um, why we believe the statute should not be introduced to mandate the internal structure of the university.
Okay, thank you. We do have written testimony from Eleanor Willock in support, uh, from Nathaniel Kini from the Hawaii Regional Council of Carpenters, also in support, and from Kenneth Wong, late testimony, also in support. Uh, members, do you have any questions? I, I have a question. So I, President, I understand that, um, the Regents adopted this reorganization and for the record, I certainly have supported that in the past. However, having seen, um, the last couple of years that it's been working or not working, I seem to have a difference of, um, heart now, and, um, my understanding is the accreditation team of, uh, WASC, W A S C, their recommendations was for the regions to adopt policies. They really did, did not conclude, I don't know if that's the right word, but we're certainly concerned about combining the president and the chancellor. And, um, they said that they wanted the po, the regions to adopt policies regarding conflicts of interest, aligning the resources and allocation, et cetera, et cetera. My understanding that was never done.
The WASC, uh, report, which is available, has not yet been adopted by the condition, by the commission. So the way that process works is the team comes out, they visit with us, and their recommendation to the commission, which will act later this month, was that the current structure with the president and chancellor uh, i- in a combined role, um, is in compliance with WASC standards, and they recommended the adoption of a conflict of interest policy. The other, um, items you mentioned are unrelated to that specific question.
Okay, Senator Favella, you had a question?
Yes, sir. Yeah, well, a couple of here. So I, I'm not sure what Senator Kim, sorry, I just walked in. In two thousand and fifteen, yeah, Board of Regents, President and State Commission of Higher Education, we strongly recommend maintain a current status, uh, structure of the President of the United, President of the university system be distant and separated. Position of the chancellor and the University of Manoa. And so, we just wanna bring this up because there's numerous of, let me finish this up. The role and the responsibilities of two positions are significantly different in, in, in the scope of, of your position. I understand that you're saying that they're gonna vote and there's no conflict of interest. If you look at the roles of leadership for, uh, the president and the chancellor, but you have both roles, sir. It really takes a very, very backseat to the exact position as you as president in fundraising, holding meetings, um, doing the job of, of, um, just leading the school. And the chancellor's one is, the required of the person, a prepared elite individual of the United, uh, university campus, and a mission of focused academic, financial, higher education with the large, larger of the UH Institute. Then it says, recognizing that these two people supposed to collaborate. How can you collaborate when you cannot separate yourself? You cannot collaborate with yourself, just like me, I cannot focus by myself. I'm the only senator, but I cannot focus by myself. So it's very important to collaborate when you need to make decisions for universities, then you're supposed to be concentrating on the rest of the ten individual University of Hawaii campuses system. So how can you do this? So like I said, if you're gone, this means the chancellor and the president of the university is gone, if you're not on, on, on campus. And part of the chancellor's, uh, thing is to making sure that everything runs smoothly on the campus. So you know, you keep saying that it, it's, it's not a big, big deal, but it is. Especially when I'm gonna give you one right now, when it comes to hiring of the ED. You muddy up your whole position on both sides because you cannot separate the roles. Okay, I'll give you another one, the procurement. Okay, you're the president, you're the procurement chief, and the chancellor. You can go from one million dollars to two million dollars over budget. All of these things was made, any, many, many more. I mean, who do you consult with? Chancellor, you cannot, because you're the chancellor. You're the procurement chief. Who are you gonna consult with? On the best interests of the taxpayers, student and faculty. How can they come to you when you're just one person? You're one person, man. I, I don't know how we can say to the taxpayers, talk to the president. Or is the same guy that I get to complain about? Or is it the chancellor? Or is the same guy I get to complain about? I gotta probably procurement. That's the same guy. You need separation. And the reason for that, and the, the study that they said in two thousand and fifteen, it has to be separated. So I don't know where you see, how is it possible? Then I have a part over here that says, when we talk about the financial responsibility, they say that having the chancellor and the president being together brings out, brings out the savings to the state and to the, to the, his taxpayers. Brings out that you should not be the two people. The concern of the lack of, of leadership in both sides, having one person, it weighs up all the money you think that we're saving. So I don't know how much money you think we're saving, but it says inside of here in this article, no matter how much money we're saving, it's not worth it having one person to be chancellor and president. So I just wanna know how, how you feel that you, 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 I guess you three, um, making the best decisions for the state of Hawaii at the University of Hawaii. Because when we talk to you about the procurement, you said, you said you put the union, best interest of the university first. Which two of you was putting the university in the best interest? Which three? President? Procuring president, leader, or whatever, or the chancellor? Which one was putting the university's best interest first? Was it the procurement chief, president, or the chancellor? Which one? So I don't know, and the community don't know. We need to have separation. And that's just something that I, I, I looked into this over and over, and everybody says the same thing over and over. They have to have separation. You talk about the savings. People that are not save money if we're not gonna get clarity and transparency. And right now, we don't have nothing like that going forward. So I wish you could really give us a cool, a better reason than about saving money. Because apparently, coming to saving money, you don't take the consideration upon yourself. So, um, can you explain that?
Uh, thank you, Senator. I, I'd say a couple of things. Um, I am certainly familiar with the WICI report uh, that you, you cited. Um, I will just note that you can, anyone can be as passionate on any side of this issue. This Chair Kim noted, it was just a few years ago when she strongly supported, uh, this approach. Um, and she liked the way the combined, uh, model was working. And, um, because I get so few compliments from Chair Kim, I do try to save them, and I can look at them on days like after this hearing, when she told me I was doing a great job at both roles. Um, that opinion changes when I make decisions that somebody doesn't agree with, and I understand that. And I make my interests, my decisions, in the best interest of the entire University of Hawaii and the state of Hawaii, and I do that consistently. Uh, there is a savings of money, but I would say just as importantly, um, and I shared with you in my testimony, the data, that the times when the position has been separated and the University of Hawaii has had this, had the singular structure, um, until nineteen seventy-two. There was not even a chancellor position in the history of the university until nineteen seventy-two. When that position was created in nineteen seventy-two, in the next eleven years, there were six different chancellors. That is not healthy. And then the positions were combined for the next seventeen years, and only two people served in the combined role. Then they were separated again in two thousand and one. And in that period, uh, there were four presidents and seven chancellors between two thousand and one and two thousand, uh, sixteen, when they were combined again on, uh, you know, at that point on an interim basis. So what I will tell you is in spite of the theory of the WICI paper, and I supported it at the time it came out, I am not faulting anyone for coming to different conclusions over time based on evidence. And my assessment of the evidence, uh, is that the separated model does not work. And one of the reasons is that, um, it is very difficult for a chancellor of Manoa to be fully empowered when everyone in town has opinions about everything that chancellor should do, and nobody can decide who's really in charge of the campus, because they will go to the president regardless of what the chancellor decides. And, and that's the basis for my, um, my view on this. I can appreciate that other people have other views. And I would say that ultimately, um, in my opinion, the constitution gives that authority to the Board of Regents, notwithstanding, you know, the fact that, you know, you, you can pass a bill and call it a matter of statewide concern. I, I get that is also consistent with the constitution.
Okay, I look at these people, the roles of the president and the roles of the chancellor on campus, yeah? Maybe you might have something different. But the role of the president has ten, ten bullet points. Chancellor has seven. And when you read into this, it says here, so I don't know how, there is a confusion. The Board of Regents and the chancellor and the president collaborate together. That's what I'm trying to explain. So there is a separation here on the roles of a chancellor. It doesn't say the chancellor oversees and run the school. It says through the Board of Regents, president and the chancellor collaborate together. So I, I, I don't understand what you're saying, that the chancellor, there's a confusion on campus. The only confusion is that when, when you have that much changes in chancellor, you say it's very sad. But what is the relationship between the chancellor and the president and the Board of Regents? So maybe that's the reason why maybe we had a lot of turnaround with chancellors leaving the campus, because maybe you couldn't, you know, collaborate with the president. So by having this, like I said, I, I mean, I just kinda, I just kinda, um, wanna know where the university and the people that's gonna be making this decision to try to keep, the reason why we tried to separate this is because it says over here again, let me, let me just, let me just try to quote this, because I want people to understand fairly small, right, for the cost savings. The negative consequence effect, right, is way bigger than the cost savings. So, so this is not the study that I did or written, but this is from, this is two thousand and fifteen, right, April of thirty of two thousand and fifteen. So if they see this in here and we go forward, continue to go single, single, then what is the actual projection going forward? Because you, you're doing a lot, you know, this ten, top ten duties. Every other one of me, you know, what is your, what part of your job? Fundraising. Fundraising. A lot of them, fundraising, fundraising, fundraising. So I think maybe you're gonna read this, it says this. Collaboration and management and making skills of fundraising. So I just wanna know, how much fundraising did you did since the last time you said you'd been president, President Lasner? How much fundraising did you be in charge of?
To date, um, I reported to the Regents, uh, last month that our fundraising total was a hundred twenty-five million, which is the highest, um.
Yeah, no, no, no. How much money you guys raised? How much you led as the president of the university? How much you took by the reins and led this charge of fundraising? How much of the you did? Not how much money the university had raised in fundraising. How much did you lead as the president and leader of the University of Hawaii? How much did you lead?
I don't, um, it's, it's, uh, Senator, fundraising is a team sport. One person does not do it.
I, I understand that. We see like, I'm the president of the Lions Club, and we are a team, yeah? Throughout the years, I do five to ten fundraisers to raise money for my club. It's a nonprofit club. Okay, I, I understand it's a team effort because my secretary, my treasurer, all the guys collaborate with me, but I am the leader. You as the leader, our team, now your team around you is the leader, you're the head. How much did you lead, you're key into fundraising for that campus?
So of the hundred twenty-five million that I reported, most of it was for the Manoa campus, including the largest cash gift in our history, um, of fifty million dollars that we received, uh, earlier this year.
Yeah, so I guess you're missing, you're missing the point.
I, I, I'm sorry, I guess I am.
I know, I know your team did a great job in getting the most money, but what did you do as the team leader? In the meanwhile, maybe you need a fundraiser in the parking lot selling chicken. I mean, what, what, what is it? I mean, I can tell you all the ones I did. Power washers, chicken sales. I can tell you what I had to help lead with my team.
So I, I'm responsible for, um, working with the University of Hawa, Hawaii Foundation to restructure the relationship between the University of Hawaii Foundation and the University of Hawaii. Um, I meet roughly weekly with our chief fundraiser, uh, who also serves as a vice president of UH, Tim Dolan. Um, we reviewed, for example, on that gift, uh, the strategy, the approach, um, the nature of the ask. Um, I, I mean, I could share with you all the people who contributed to it.
Let me just let you see, right? Yeah, so just seeing this overview, right? Evolve with a system of fundraising efforts. You name me the stuff that you collaborate or you probably went on the phone and you guys have this. I just like, no, as, as a leader, because this is the reason why it's so important to have the chancellor and the president separated. Because the concentration on this thing, I mean, Obama, I don't know if you got this. I think, I think I should send this to you, so then you can see. Out of the ten, over five of them talks about your fundraising skills as a leader and a president of the University of Hawaii. So I, I just wanted to know that because the chancellor and the Regents check with each other to check with you. You guys collaborate together. So I just wanted you to just name one that you had led by yourself and with your team.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, um, I'm not sure I understand, but I, I meet with donors regularly. Um, typically, the speci, I, I mean, the nature of fundraising for universities is a little bit different than the Lions Club, and um, we just do it in different ways, and we have different roles and responsibilities. But I regularly meet with donors. Um, I sit on the board of the University of Hawaii Foundation. I, I mean, Senator, if I can, I'm very familiar with that report. I was involved in commissioning it. I understand what it told us. Um, I, um, attempted to implement, uh, what it recommended. And what I will tell you is I, I understand the theoretical language, uh, of, of the collaboration among the parties. And in the history of the University of Hawaii, it has never worked. So regardless of the theory, if you look at the period from nineteen eighty-four, uh, I'm sorry, from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen eighty-three, six different chancellors. And then if you look at two And then if you look at two thousand, uh, one to two thousand sixteen, we had seven different chancellors. And, and so it isn't just two people who can't collaborate. In this institution, it has, it has literally never worked to provide stable leadership. And you know, there's theory and there's practice and, and what we did is we changed the structure. This time around to create a new position, the UH Manoa Provost. Who has much of the responsibility for the Manoa campus. And we had never had that before. And so far, in my opinion, it's working. I believe in many opinions it's working, but I do understand that people who disagree with specific decisions. Will point to the structure as the problem, but I, I don't think that's correct.
Okay, so again, question, so University West Oahu, does the, do they have a chancellor?
Excuse me?
Do the University of West Oahu, do they have their own chancellor?
They do.
Uh, does the mechanism work there?
Say it again? I'm sorry, the audio is a little breaking up.
Does the mechanism work? Does it work?
There's a chancellor at West Oahu.
The chancellor at West Oahu reports to the president and has responsibility for that campus. That campus does not have a provost.
See, that's the reason why. So why do you have the chancellor position? It says your duties right here, you said you're familiar with it. So you know your duties as a chancellor, but then you hire a provo. To do exactly what you're supposed to be doing on the running of the campus because you guys restructured it. So you guys now get the president, the chancellor and a provo. How are we saving money like that?
We, we, we don't actually have a chancellor at Manoa.
Do you agree, um, against if we remove that title from your position then?
There's a. I'm not sure I under, that is correct. That title does not exist for Manoa.
To separate your position as the president and the chancellor. So if you're not against it. Then what is the opposition?
This is a unique system, um, Senator, if you, um, comparators to our structure. Would be the University of Washington. Where the president of the University of Washington, which has multiple campuses. The president of the University of Washington is also the head of the Seattle campus. Which is the main, what you think of as UW, is really UW-Seattle. In addition, there is a UW-Tacoma and a UW-Battle. Similarly, Indiana University has one president. Who serves as the chief executive of Indiana University, uh, Bloomington, which is the flagship research campus. Uh, in the state of Indiana, uh, there is no chancellor for that campus, the same structure we have now. And then the other, I believe in Indiana, there are about seven different campuses, each of which have a chancellor. Who reports to the president of IU, who is also the head of the Bloomington flagship research. So this is not an uncommon structure. Uh, the state of Missouri just went to the structure as well.
Okay, I know you always talk about million and million schools, how much the pay more than we here. Again, question for you, um, are you the procurement officer? A procurement officer?
I am, uh, uh, by the laws of the state of Hawaii, the president of the university. Is the chief procurement officer for the University of Hawaii, just as the superintendent of education is. Just as the head of the Hawaii Health Systems Corporation is, just as the head of the judiciary is.
Okay, because, um. I, 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 to me, what's bothering me is you guys created. Another position, bypassed the chancellor position and made this provo position. In the beginning stages was supposed to be saving us money. So that we don't have a chancellor. And then you guys created another position that actually do the framework and exactly. What this says of the job description of a chancellor. So if the University of West Oahu is doing great with their chancellor. Why, why wouldn't it do great on the University of Manoa campus? Because of, of previous, so two steps?
Let me, let me, let me try to say something. Okay. So just to follow up on that, uh, president, according to the report from WASC, it says from two thousand.
Excuse me, that's the report. Are you reading WASC or WICHE?
Wash, Wash.
Okay.
Okay, according to them, from two thousand and one to twenty eighteen, when the system leader was separate from all campus. From all campus leaders, Manoa had seven chancellors, four of whom were interim. With an average time in office of less than three years, those chosen to lead UH Manoa. Were not in office long enough to see the graduation of the undergraduate class that entered with them. These turnovers also made it difficult for UH Manoa chancellor to establish effective working relations. Either with the colleagues inside the system, including the Regents or key constituency in the community. So basically they're saying that, you know, what you said is true, but they were hired as interim. When you came in. In fact, I believe you actually fired Tom Apple, right? Um, you, you let him go, you fired him. I think there was a, um, where is my notes on that? Where, um, they filed a, a claim and you folks settled, UH settled with Tom Apple. Um, let's see, it says, um, Apple's attorney. Uh, accepted the settlement offer from UH that will pay him two hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars a year. So tenure professor as well as a lump sum of a hundred thousand dollars, additional compensation to cover attorney fees. And then after Apple, uh, you hired, uh, Bly Vorman. Robert Bly Vorman as an interim chancellor. And Bly Vorman served only two years. My understanding is that. There was pushback by the campus, pushback by him having to cut or make cuts or how he's gonna solve some of the money problems. And, um, and then so he chose not to continue on and then you're supposed to have. Um, appoint a. Permanent region, which then that never happened. Um, so you know, really didn't have a chance to work, so I guess from what Senator Favela is saying is that. You know, if you have, why aren't you the chancellor then of West Oahu and, and of, of all the other campuses?
So the, the reason is that a flagship research university. Um, is, um, a different kind of animal. Um, uh, you, you know, uh, senators, um. Both models are used in different parts of the country. Um, this model has not worked at this institution. So you just cited the examples of my experiences with separate chancellors. Um, and what I will say is whether it, whoever the president is. And whoever the chancellor is, it has never worked at the University of Hawaii. And when, for example, you have questions. You expect the president of the university to stand, stand up and be accountable. And, um. That creates significant tensions on, uh. The ability of a chancellor to do their job of a flagship research university that is in the paper. Literally every day.
I would think that because it is a flagship, more so that you should have a chancellor. And more so the president needs to oversee because we have issues with many of the other campuses. Um, that have chancellors. And my understanding is that when the chancellor doesn't agree with the president, therein lies the problem. And I know in the case of, uh, Bly Vorman, he had recommended and did the study that the Cancer Center and the. Medical school should be one. And then he found there's a lot of pushback and so. Um, as well as I believe Apple felt the same way. So there's a lot of issues with personalities, I guess, that might go on. But that shouldn't change the issue of whether or not it should be.
Senator, all I can say is that you, like me, have changed your mind on this issue. And, um, the question is every time, you know, somebody changes their mind, do we pass a new law? Right now, the, the, you know. I, I, I'm just repeating myself. I understand what you're saying. Um, if you feel you need to pass this law, then I think, you know, you will pass the bill. But I believe you are doing the wrong thing for this university.
But president, I, I'm sure you agree that times change, people change, the.
Absolutely.
The type of students and, you know, we have a whole new world with COVID and distance learning and. With the vision of where we're headed, that changes and, uh, you know, there is usually a life to how long a president serves. How long a chancellor serves to bring in new ideas, new visions, to resize the university, what is the right size? I mean, all of those things change. And so to remain stagnant in one area. And you have to look at what are the individuals and how are they, uh, carrying out some of these. Uh, positions and policies and so forth. I think that's also important. Um, so it's not so much just the decisions that I made. I think it's like, how does it, how is it working? What is the process? How are you folks handling things? And, and lately, there's been a lot of concerns. About how the university is operating and the, how are they handling situations? And I think that, you know, is reflective of the leadership at the University of Hawaii.
Well, I, I also think it's reflective of a senate committee that likes to do that and, you know, it. These were the conversations before I was here and I would assume they'll be the conversations after I'm here.
Well, yes, I believe the chairs before me that brought up a lot of issues and they continue to say that these issues aren't being dealt with. And so, you know, the fact that you're saying that we shouldn't be transparent and accountable and the people shouldn't know what's going on. That this committee brings up these, this issues. Remind you that I bring up the issues that is brought up to me by the people at the university, by a member of, of your, your leadership.
I understand that.
And your studies, your pigs, your whatever that comes to us, we just implement it or we look at it, we put it out. Forth for that the people can then, um, give their input. So, um, you know, say whatever it is you want about the committee, but this is our role as a legislature. We are elected by the people to make sure that the students are benefiting from the university. The university should be run at the convenience of the, the students. And making sure they, in fact, are able to get their degrees within a stated period of time. And much of that is not happening because the classes aren't being offered to them at a time when the students can attend. The, they're having difficulty. Those are the kinds of information we get from our constituents.
Senator, every decision is a difficult one in a complicated institution. And, um, I do my best every day for the students and the people of Hawaii.
I would appreciate.
And there is no decision of any significance that everyone will ever agree with.
No, I, I agree. It's a, it's a thankless job. Um, that's what we sign up for. But I think that, you know, at the end of the day, we have to look at what is the best for the, the greatest good for the greatest number of people. And that's what we try to do.
And I would just say the constitution suggests that's the role of the Board of Regents. Although you do have the ability to pass laws that you decide are of statewide concern.
Right. And the fact that we confirm these regions, if we find there has to be checks and balances and that. If they're not carrying out their duties or not doing what they're, they should be doing, I mean, there needs to be some checks and balances. And, and therein lies the reasons for that. The constitution is written the way it is. Members, any other questions?
Yes, go back to the question about fundraising. Um, President Lasner. Uh, I forget the amount, it was a hundred and something million dollars that was raised. Was that money only for, um. Was that funds only raised for Manoa or was it for all?
No, that's the, the system Y number. So last year was about just over a hundred million for the entire UH system. And this year so far, it's, it, well, last month I reported about a hundred twenty-five year to date. But, um, UH Manoa is the largest component of that and we provide reports. To the Board of Regents quarterly. I can send you one, Senator, so you can see.
I'd like to know the breakdown, yeah.
Uh, I'll, I'll definitely send that to you, but, um. Many donors are now investing in research. And, um, those are some of our largest gifts of late.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Um, if there are no other questions, members, we will move on. We are running out of time. Um. Did I do this? Oh my, testifies this. Sorry, I lost my testifying this. Okay, so moving on to the third item on the agenda, we have. Senate Bill three one eight four relating to University of Hawaii resident tuition fee. Spans the criteria to qualify for resident tuition fees to include high school seniors and recent high school graduates. We have Lori Tanigawa from the Deputy Attorney General's Office with comments.
Yes, good afternoon, Lori Tanigawa, Deputy Attorney General, the Department submitted comments, which we appreciate the increased consideration of. Um, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Hayashi, interim superintendent.
Not president chair.
Okay, and, uh, Hey Okimoro, Associate Vice President for University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, Chair Kim, Vice Chair Kidani and members of the committee. I am Hey Okimoro, Associate Vice President for the University of Hawaii System, and I stand on my written testimony in support of this measure. And I, along with Tammy Chan, the Associate Vice President for Academic Affairs for the UH Community College System. Are also available to answer any questions the committee may have.
Okay, and then we have Marlene Matos with Hawaii P twenty partnerships for education in support. Uh, members, those are all the testimonial, testimony we received. Are there any questions for those that are here present, um, in support of this measure? Hearing none, thank you. Item four is Senate Bill thirty-one fifty-six relating to University of Hawaii. Tuition fees and special fund. Um, we have like three minutes. Are they going to cut us off? We may have to, we may have to defer this. Okay, this is to recognize a cost sharing agreement for all personnel expenses between state general funds and funds. And the University of Hawaii tuition and fee special fund for appropriated general fund positions. Is beneficial to both University of Hawaii and state specified conditions for exemptions for the University of Hawaii. From sections eighty-seven dash thirty-nine and eighty-eight dash one twenty-five revised statutes. Calbert Young from University of Hawaii.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Members, Calbert Young from University of Hawaii System. Uh, in the interest of time, university stands on its testimony and support. Our points of support, pretty much you've actually laid it out in the description of the bill. Uh, if you have any questions about the technical, uh, details of the approach, uh, happy to answer them. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, and then Craig Kira in support, uh.
Support, no. Who's comment?
Oh, it said support, okay, comments. Okay, go ahead.
We'll stand on our testimony, uh, Senator with the comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, I'm reading your testimony. It says Department of Budget and Finance supports Senate Bill three one five six. So, did you not write this one?
Sorry. Apologize. I was reading the comments at the end there.
Okay, I just want to get it right, you mean if it's.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, um. So let me ask this. So for the members that don't know, um, I will refer to S three nine seven, which is. A, a fund in which, um, the university uses their tuition monies. To fund positions that is not funded by the general fund, but is. But is on our list of approved, of approved positions, no funded. Then they use the tuition funds, but the state pays. The fringe benefits. However, there is a statute that says any positions that are funded with special funds. The special funds have to pay the fringe. Is that correct, Mr. Y?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair.
Yes.
So, so, sorry, I, I think we've, we've done, you and I have done this a number of times over the years. I think, I think I got it down. Okay, so, so it's, um, S three nine seven is actually an accounting system code. Um, that has been the nomenclature, like, common reference to a practice. Um, whereby the University of Hawaii. Uh, can, uses tuition and fee funds to pay for the salaries. Of general fund authorized positions in the budget. But for which the legislature has not appropriated sufficient general funds. It is a practice that goes back to two thousand and four or two thousand and six. Uh, it is a practice that hasn't been solidified in statute. That's the purpose of the bill. Um, back in two thousand and four, two thousand and six, this approach was developed as a cost sharing approach. Uh, for the state, at the, at that time, there was a state recession. And it, the practice was, uh, the university would use its funds to pay for position. the university would use its funds to pay for positions that were previously funded by the state via general funds. In exchange, the state would continue to use general funds to pay for the fringe benefits of those positions as it previously had. So that's why it was, it's described as a cost sharing approach.
Okay, but again, it's your word on this. My understanding is that there are variations of what was agreed to, whether there was a limit as to what it was agreed to and as far as how long this would run, run its course. And so I guess I gotta ask BNF, who, who made this agreement? What, under what authority was it made?
This is Neo Mia Hero, the
So Neo, you've been around a long time, right? Who made this agreement?
This was an administrative agreement.
Okay, so where, where is the documentation or the, or the where is, where is any authority?
There was none.
There was no authority. So we're just a word we're hearing. There's no authority. So on what authority do you, have you been paying out this money? I mean, isn't it the legislature's responsibility? We are the only people that can appropriate and can pay out authorized monies to be paid and allocated. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So how are you folks able to do this? Prior to last year, how are you folks able to do this?
Basically, all non, while non general funds are assessed when payroll is run. Okay, so the, the the special fund or whatever federal fund account is assessed, a check is generated by DAGs and it's deposited, given, sent to Budget and Finance to be deposited as a non-general fund receipt. In this case, with funds, I mean, positions on this account, no special fund assessments are made. Pursuing to.
On what authority?
It's just an administrative agreement.
On who? I mean, how can we run this government on, 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 on authority that we don't know? Was it a handshake? What, what was it? I mean, on what authority? Not collect or collect or pay on, on a so-called agreement that have no record of it?
Yes, we should have followed up. But this was at the time when a policy decision was made by the executive end of the legislature.
No, the legislature did not agree.
No, no, it was a policy agreement in terms of how the university was to be funded. Prior to this period, the university was, for the most part, largely general funded. Any tuition and fee revenues collected by the university would be deposited back into the general fund. So at that
Then the ability to use the tuition funds.
Yes, that was a, that Yeah, if, if you may, that was under the understanding that they would expand and increase tuition and fees. And then we cut back on the general fund support for the university.
Right.
And the tuition and fees would replace the general fund support.
But there was no agreement that we would pay the fringe because I understand that university came to us directly, alleged directly and asked, and they said no. And that this agreement was done between two individuals, my understanding. And it was never codified. It was never, there was no authority to do it and it just continued on. And, and all these years, nobody asked, under what authority you folks are doing this? I mean, can you be liable for something or to, to be doing something that is, that you have no statutory, statutory authority to do? Because there is a statute that says that the, that special funded, other than general fund, has to pay the fringe. Correct?
Yes.
So, so what is three, S three nine seven? It's an accounting, but how is that accounting able to exist? Is it UH's accounting or is it our accounting?
S three nine seven is, we, we come, you and I exchange S three nine seven as if it's some formal program, but it's not. S three nine seven refers to a, a payroll code on the accounting system in DAGs. And it has to do with how fringe benefit costs are charged. So as Mr. Mia Hero has referenced, the, it, it's a mechanical payroll processing. When, when a all payroll gets processed by a special fund, for instance, a portion of that amount is charged as fringe. But in the, but for S three nine seven, for positions that are general fund authorized, but don't have general funds for them, S three nine seven is the code for the accounting so that there's no charged fringe onto that special fund.
And how is this, how is this code established? You don't need any kind of authority to establish it?
This is a, this is a state comptroller.
I'm asking, I'm asking the state.
Okay.
Calbert. Neil?
Beg your pardon?
How is, how is this kind of payroll code established? Under what authority?
It was done administratively.
No, that's not an authority. What is the authority? Even the administration has to have the authority. Is it the Constitution? Is it an HRS or?
It was just done.
Okay, let me, let me ask this other question. So right now, in your special tuition fund, Calbert, you said in our last meeting, you have approximately three hundred and thirty million dollars, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you've carried that pretty much has been consistent for the last few years, right? That amount, give or take.
Yes.
Right. Okay. And how much are we paying in fringe for, for this S three nine seven? For lack of a better.
It's been going down, but for the last five years, it's been working its way down to the neighborhood of about fourteen, fifteen million a year. The exception being last year, it was actually down under ten million, but that was because the state suspended the fringe benefit component for OPEB. So there wasn't that component. So it was artificially low for last year or it's, but I believe that if it were not for that, it would still be in the neighborhood of fourteen, fifteen million.
Okay, so fourteen, fifteen million dollars. You have three hundred and thirty million dollars. You mean you folks cannot pay? You're already paying for the salaries out of, out of your fund, the tuition and fees fund. So how is that a hardship? I mean, you talk about partnership. We already give you, how much do we give you in general funds every year? For the last few years that we've given you?
In total to the university, it's on the neighborhood of about five hundred and forty million.
Okay, so we give you five hundred and forty million. And you're saying that it's a partnership and yes, a share cost sharing, yes, we give you five hundred and fifty million dollars. And you cannot pay the fifteen million out of your three hundred and thirty million dollars?
I've never said that. I've never said, I'm, yeah, you're saying that. I've never said that. I'm saying it was, this was an approach that was developed before I was even with the state or the university. Okay, I was the former finance, state finance director and this practice was in place as well. Okay, it was, when it developed at a time, that historical context was at a time when the state was faced with a recession, so I can understand
Understand.
This cost sharing approach was implemented. But even when I was state finance director, it was, the practice was never codified into statute. So that's what this bill will.
Yes, that doesn't make it right, right? So now we're looking at it and why is it needed? If in fact, you folks feel that you need those positions and you have that money, then I don't understand. I can see if you you had a deficit or you couldn't pay it, or you didn't have a two hundred and thirty million dollar carryover.
Well, I, I'm gonna toot my horn a little bit. And I've been at the university for just about six, seven years. And when I started the university, the balance net fund was not at that level. So it's been worked up to that level. Now, I'm not saying that the university can't afford it. However, this would be changing approach that's been in place for about fifteen plus years that originated as a cost sharing approach by the state. And at the time, it was intended.
It was illegally done because there is no statutory, there is no authority.
It's news to us.
Yeah, so I mean, you can't say that, you know, because it was there. I mean, it, it wasn't right. The legislature had no say in it. And now you're telling us that we need to codify this by way of a, of a statue?
Well, I would say that the reason why this approach was done at the time was because when the legislature reduced the funding of general funds, that should have triggered a rift.
Okay, but this is not that time. This is a new time. We're looking at, at how we're transparent and how we accountable. And right now, when the legislature does not fund a position or we decide we wanna cut a position and you tell us, don't cut it, just don't fund it, and you go ahead and fund it anyway, a position, say it was a position that Senator Kidani feels that we shouldn't have and everybody agree in the legislature, yeah, that position is not needed. We're not gonna fund it, but we're not gonna terminate it because you folks don't wanna have to go through that process again. Now you go and you fund it with, with tuition funds. Now we gotta fund the, the fringe, which is sixty percent of a position that the legislature clearly said, no, we're not funding, we don't think is needed. And then how is that even, even reported to us? How is that reported to the Finance Committee and the Ways and Means Committee?
Your committee gets all of the positions that are in the budget, general fund authorized, and the amounts that are actually appropriated and paid as salaries for those positions. And you will notice there's a long list of positions you don't provide any funding for, and they are warm body, general funded, authorized positions.
Yes, but we don't know that they're all filled and we don't know how much that fringe is every year. Do you folks report that fringe cost to us, Neil?
Beg your pardon?
Do you folks report the fringe cost to us?
We in our non-tax revenue report, we report fringe reimbursements, yes.
Is it part of the CAFR or is it part of, part of?
It's part of what we provide to the Council on Revenues. I, I and I think it may be part of the report. The, the amounts get folded into the CAFR. I don't know if they're identified specifically in the CAFR.
Okay, so everything's got folded in, it doesn't get separated out or itemized?
I, I'm not sure. I would have to check.
Okay, I would appreciate if you did that. Members, any other questions? We are running out of time. Okay. Thank you. That is the last item on the agenda. Can we go into decision making or do I have to? Okay, so we are going to defer all the measures for decision making to the eight. Three P M. Okay, with that, members, we are, thank you.